This is a rebroadcast of the Eau Claire School Board Meeting. The audio for this program can be heard on WRFP LP 101.9 FM.
I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Eau Claire School Board. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Iverson, have we complied with the open meetings law this evening?
Yes, we have.
Thank you. Could you please do a roll call to verify quorum?
Commissioner Spindler.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Cummins.
Here.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Dux.
Here.
Commissioner Vu.
Here.
Commissioner Jean.
Here.
Great, thank you. Next on our agenda is the public forum. We have one person signed up to speak. Just realized there's typically a four-minute limit for speaking. Please come to the podium and just say your name and your address. And I have Colin Danielson.
Hello, my name is Colin. My address is 2013 Moholt Drive. I am a sophomore at North this year, and I am presenting on behalf of Student Council. I am the co-committee head of School Atmosphere this year. And so, we have been debating on what we wanted to be our year-long project to be benefiting North, and I guess in this one, we'll be benefiting Memorial hopefully as well. So, we first started with our building secretary, Ms. Brown, who contacted Ms. Iverson about the parking passes at the schools. And she found that at the 2004-2005 school year, the school board had voted to, oh, let's see, wrong one, sorry. They had voted to increase the student parking fees to be making up for a budget shortfall. So, that increased the fees to $50 annually and $25 a semester. So, you know, with students these days, there's a lot of cost associated, you know, for school, you know, fees for activities and everything else, car maintenance, gas, insurance, and a lot of this is put on students. So, we decided that it would be beneficial to present to you guys if we could possibly reduce the cost. So, one of the other things that we would like to present to you is Memorial and North both have very different forms. Memorial has much more detail on theirs, and we feel that it would be very nice, you know, if they could be also put together, you know, to be more universal between the buildings. So, there's Memorials, and then North's is just one page. And so, you know, I know we compare our district oftentimes to others in our, you know, Athletic Conference. So, an article from Monday, January 13, 2014, from the Leader Telegram says that the Menominee School Board had voted to reduce their fee from $40 to $10 annually. And this was because they had no longer a parking shortage in their lot, and because they feel that it was an increase in security for students to be parking on school grounds as opposed to out in the streets. So, we feel that this would also, I mean, I don't believe that parking in the streets is so much an issue in Eau Claire, but just to, you know, that there isn't a shortage. And I also have some pictures, if you guys would like to see, of North's lot. I haven't done any with Memorial, but over the last several years, you know, just showing that there is empty space there. And one of the big things that we've seen at North is that a lot of students have not been purchasing their passes, and they have not been getting issued tickets. And we feel that that is kind of unfair to the students who do, you know, make the right decision to purchase theirs. So, we would like to see that being more equal for all students. That, I guess, sums it up, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your activism and in speaking out, I like that. Okay, that's the only public comment we had for the night. Next is Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming Board of Education events. Tomorrow, April 21st, at 4:00 PM at the Administration Building, there's a Charter/Choice Programming Committee meeting. On April 22nd, at 4:00 PM at the Service Center, there's a meeting of the Demographic and Trends Committee. On April 23rd, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at Durand High School, there is a WASB gathering for new board members, and we have several board members who will be attending that gathering. On April 28th, at noon at Whippley, there will be ECASD Foundation Board meeting. On April 29th through May 1st, at Wisconsin Dells, there's an Innovative Schools Network conference, and we have a couple of board members who will be attending that conference, and some of our members of the Charter/Choice Programming Committee. On May 4th, at 10:30 AM in the Administration Building, there's a Policy and Governance meeting, and on that evening, there's a school board meeting. And then, on May 11th, we will have a Board Orientation meeting here at the Administration Building from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So, a couple of announcements to make tonight. The Eau Claire Area School District will host a Community Conversation for community stakeholders to discuss empowering our youth with disabilities through employment and community involvement. This free event will take place on Wednesday, April 29th, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM at the Dove Healthcare West on Truax Boulevard in Eau Claire. We would like to congratulate tonight Ian Jolly, North Star Middle School Social Studies teacher. He has been selected for the 2015 Junior Division Bearing Teacher of the Year Award, which recognizes outstanding National History Day teachers. There is only one middle school teacher selected each year in Wisconsin. Mr. Jolly was recognized for his development and use of creating teaching methods that interest students in history and helps them make exciting discoveries about the past. And he is here with us tonight, so would you stand?
Stand up! Stand up!
And we mentioned at the last meeting that Sue Devine was the recent recipient of the Kohl's Education Foundation Fellowship, and those recipients are chosen for their superior ability to inspire a love of learning in their students, their ability to motivate others, and their leadership and service within and outside the classroom. And Sue is with us tonight, so we'd like to congratulate you again. And then, on the school side, North High School was named DPI's Badger Link Library of the Month. In 2014, the school district had the second highest clicks to the Badger Link website. So, to increase reading interest even more at North High School's Media Center, the library is set up like a bookstore. And there are areas for local interests, post-secondary readiness, classics, and exceptional collection of science fiction and fantasy, as well as a newly expanded graphic novels collection. North also spends time working on research projects, and recently, North High School received grants for technology projects. These STEM projects engage students in problem-solving, critical thinking, and useful applications for science. So, we congratulate all of those who have contributed to the library there. And finally, we have three Odyssey of the Mind teams from Eau Claire, and they recently won the state championship in their divisions. Two will compete at the World Finals at Michigan State University from May 20th to the 23rd, and 25 different countries will participate in this event. And the two teams heading to the World Finals are the North Memorial Team and the Manns Elementary School Teams. So, that's great.
Great, thank you Superintendent Hardback. For the President's Report, the first thing I would like to do is, I just want to take a moment of silence to remember Dave Dux, an outstanding public servant of Eau Claire for many years, and a very caring person who passed away recently this last week. So, I would just like to take a moment of silence to remember him. All right, thank you. I just wanted to be sure that we remembered an outstanding citizen of our community. Second, I would like to recognize a school board member who is leaving, this is our last board member, our last board meeting, Wendy Sue Johnson. So, we have a plaque, Superintendent and I, to award Wendy. So, Wendy has, we'd like to thank her for her six years of service on the board. And I, for one, have valued her thoroughness on issues and speaking out on so many issues when I've been here, and her insight. So, thank you very much for your service, Wendy. And next time, we start a new board. And the last thing on my list, it's very short tonight, just a reminder of board members, if you want to go to the Spring Academy, it is May 2nd. We have a couple people going, but if you're interested, let Secretary Iverson know. All right, student representative reports. Who would like to go first? Hannah?
Yep, I'm going first tonight.
Okay, great.
So, I kind of want to piggyback on what Colin brought up in the public forum, just about the parking lot passes, just kind of the student opinion about it. I know a lot of students at North do not purchase parking passes because they either can't afford it, or they know that it won't be reinforced. And I think lowering the cost really could make that more universal between the students and have more students purchase them if the cost is lower. And what the pictures that Colin had showed were that the parking lot is actually, it's full enough where if everyone paid the $10, it would probably be about the same cost that they're bringing in right now, with just a few people paying the $50. So, the total cost really wouldn't be that different. So, that was one of my things. The second one was that, so, I've asked a lot of teachers about this, and there's, I guess, a general fund for money at North. And if, that's where like all of the money that students pay goes to, and then the school decides where it's allocated. So, if a book is lost, or a book is damaged, and a student is asked to pay to replace that book, the money doesn't necessarily go to replacing the book. So, a teacher may be in a classroom with one book short of a classroom set if a student damages it. And this has been a concern to some students who have gotten damaged books that have notes written all over them, or things like that, that have been paid for to be replaced but aren't replaced. And this is just a concern because it, it, I don't really know the word. Okay, so, it's hard to learn from a set of books that is damaged, or has pages missing, or isn't the best of its quality, or if a teacher has to change their lesson plans from year to year because they don't have enough of a classroom set. And so, that's becoming a concern, and I was just wondering if there could be some, a little bit more research done into that as to why it just goes to the general fund and not to like the direct replacement of the book. And so, and then, my last little bit was about AP registration. It was last week, and this year, it was held during fifth hour, so all students in AP classes were excused from their fifth hour class so they could fill out their bubble sheet to get, save time on the day that their AP test came. And I thought this was a really positive thing, that it was held during a class period this year instead of after school like it was last year. I think the attendance was greater, and there were fewer conflicts with athletics or jobs after school, and I thought this was a really good thing.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that feedback, including about the damaged books. Okay. Bring my trumpet. Jonah, you're next, go ahead.
Um, I'd like to start by personally congratulating the Odyssey of the Mind teams from the district. As a kid who grew up going to like Nationals for Odyssey of the Mind, it's a valuable program, and I'd like to recognize them even further. Once again, piggybacking off the parking passes thing, at Memorial, actually, has been a point of contention in the past, the parking passes, not because they're too expensive necessarily, but because they are enforced to the T. And if you can't park 10 minutes without getting a fine, so, district-wide, I think it'd be great to iron out those issues of the inconsistencies between the two high schools and make sure, and ideally, lower the prices because it is a burden on students. AP registration, as Hannah said, was a positive thing this year. I was joking with Mr. Oldenberg, our principal, during the event. We actually had too many kids, and he was like, "Joan, we have to shut this down, there's too many kids taking AP classes." So, as we go forward, just keep pushing. These AP classes are really something that are pushing kids to be the best they can be, and making sure that everyone has the ability to take these classes should be our number-one priority. Also, so later in the meeting, you guys are going to look at a resolution for the Start Time Committee charge. Right now, you have on the board, the structure of the committee, all the people from the schools, community members, and you have three people from a parent advisory council, one from each level. What I, what I've talked about earlier in the year is, I see, I see a need for a student representative, and whether it's a student advisory council or not, or a representative from that, I think it'd be valuable to have student input. Yeah, keep working, because, I don't know, as you all know, I'm for this start time change, so thank you for keeping, continuing to work on that. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, Jonah. And actually, since that's on our agenda, if the board wants to talk about that, they could, they could. So, thank you very much for all that feedback. Let's see, so legislative update, Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Oh.
Legislative update? Oh, did I pass? Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the committee reports. Excuse me. I don't think P&amp;G met, correct? Budget report, go ahead, Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, the Budget Committee did meet and looked at some budget projections, which are not rosy, no matter what parameters you put in. We discussed, you know, kind of the proper projections to do because there's so much that's unknown yet coming from the state, but, you know, we do know some things, and we can anticipate some things fairly well. We discussed, I guess, what parameters are appropriate to use for budget projections, but no matter whether we use realistic projections, or we look at 0% increases, we have a revenue problem. We cannot meet our expenditures with the revenue that we have, and so, the Budget Committee is recommending that the board use its work session, preferably in May, to discuss what the next step would be, and that would be trying to decide if an operational or a capital referendum would occur at the same time, or if the operational referendum would occur first on its own. And if April of 2016 is the appropriate timeline to do so, frankly, in hindsight, if we had a crystal ball to see what this biennial budget would look like, we probably should have went in April of 2015 because next year is not good. And as long as revenue caps are in place and the revenue limit formula is not changed, it's impossible to continue to provide the education that we do with the revenue that we anticipate we'll be getting. So, it's very clear to the Budget Committee that we need a referendum for operations and capital at some point, whether they occur sooner rather than later, together will be for the board to decide. And then, also looking at kind of the history of the different types of referendums, and the passage rate has increased considerably in recent years, as I think citizens across the state understand that the revenue formula is broken. The passage rates are getting much better because the citizens understand that schools are really in a bind. And so, the committee would ask, too, that the board consider whether to go to a recurring or non-recurring, and I don't think there was clear consensus, but that, you know, it seemed to be leaning towards a recurring because as long as revenue limits are in place, we will need to exceed the revenue limit formula. So, the Budget Committee will be, you know, is asking them, the next step would be the work session.
Great, thank you for the detailed report. It's good to know. With that bright picture, we will, any other committee reports? I know demographic and trends will have an update in a little bit. I don't believe there was anything else in the other committees. Okay, yeah, but with the budget, yeah, we will put that on the agenda for discussion. Okay, Commissioner Hamburg Boyle, kind of along the same lines, I believe, legislative update.
Here I go again. I was into the WASB.org website, and it's changed a little bit, so if people are in there, don't get discouraged. You have to start digging around a little different than I used to. But I pulled out three different things to bring up tonight. One was, they did have some conversation in Madison. Senator Lena Taylor, she's a Democrat from Milwaukee, had a motion for the Joint Finance Committee to remove all non-fiscal policy items from the budget. And if you're on social media or anything across the state, you're seeing that there is a great push to pull the non-fiscal items out of the budget. So, many of the non-fiscal items, she felt, were important issues, and they shouldn't be hidden in the budget, but should be debated. And Representative John Nigren from, he's a Republican from Marinette disagreed, saying that inclusion of such policy items is standard practice. And it has been. I mean, both sides have done that over time. He made a comment that this is really the governor's one kick at the cat as far as introducing policies of his own. So, they took a vote, the Joint Finance Committee did vote. Co-chair Senator Alberta Darling and Representative Nigren identified 14 of the 35 non-fiscal policy items identified by the Legislative Fiscal Bureau, and they pulled those out, but every one that had to do with education stayed in. So, it just said the budget process taken up as separate legislation. None of the identified items related to K-12 education were pulled, so we need to be aware of that. And then, there was another push from the legislature to have, well, there's over 900 public entities within the state that uses Local Government Property Insurance Fund, which was a lower fund for insuring your property. And they want to pull that, pull that and have it done by private insurance. And what has happened, which is good, sort of, is that they've decided to put a two-year moratorium on that instead of a delay for two years, the ending dates for renewal, so we have a little more time to look and a little more time to discuss. I had asked what impact that had on our district a couple weeks ago, and we presently pay about $191,000 on our yearly property insurance premium, and if there was a 30% increase privatizing it, it would cost us about $57,000. So, I just kind of always like to ask how it would impact us. And then, lastly, Majority Leader Scott Fitzgerald, he's a Republican from Juneau, says he and his fellow Republican senators want to restore much of the $127 million that was cut from public schools in the first year of the budget. He said the precise amount will depend on the updated revenue projections, which we all know, that, and those projections should be issued in a couple weeks, so we should kind of, I'll keep you updated on what that is. And the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel reported that Fitzgerald is optimistic the new revenue estimates will be higher than current estimates, and from what I took from this piece was that it might even be higher than 150, so we'll have to wait and see, okay? And lastly, I gave board members a copy of a great example of community advocacy. I remember when we did our, when we sent our, when we sent our, what did we, when we wanted the legislature to know that we were displeased with the budget.
Resolution.
Our resolution, thank you.
A resolution to the legislature, yes.
Word finding, sorry. And Appleton sent, Appleton did an LTE for their newspaper, so I gave you a copy of it in case we may want to do something like that. It's very well done, so I thought that you might like to see a copy of it, okay? That's the end of my report, thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, some positive news from the legislature, let's hope that continues. All right, so now, we have a consent agenda. The board has either been given background material on this, or has already talked about these in committee, and usually are non-controversial items. So, these will all be voted on at once unless a board member decides to pull any. So, I would consider a motion to approve the minutes of April 6, 2015. I would consider a motion to approve the March 2015 financial report. I would consider a motion to approve the March 2015 gift report. I would consider a motion to approve the March 2015 bill payable report. I would consider a motion to approve the Human Resources Employment Report.
Paul.
Paul, okay. I would consider a motion to approve the revisions to Board Policy 183 on voting.
So, moved.
Okay, so we have a move. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, we have a second. So, we have a motion for the minutes, the financial report, the gift report, the bill payable, and the Policy 183 with the 180, with the employment report pulled. Could we have a roll call vote on that, considering the financial matters in it, please?
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Dux?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Cummins, you pulled the employment report. Cummins, have you got that, or questions?
I didn't know if there was anything of note, but I believe it will be noted later, so I move that we, I move to pass the employment report.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Jean, I assume. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, good, so we're done with the consent resolution. All right, so now, excuse me. Oh, yes, go ahead, sorry. I had it written, too, sorry.
Well, tonight, tonight's consent agenda and the employment report, you approved the appointment of Adam Keaton as the new principal of Flynn Elementary School. And Adam is with us tonight. I'm going to ask you to stand. And I'm going to ask you to remain standing as I talk about you. Adam is a product of the Eau Claire Area School District's schools. He attended Davie Elementary School, Sam Davie. He attended DeLong Middle School, and he graduated from North High School. After leaving North, he attended the University of Wisconsin in Eau Claire and received his undergraduate degree there. And then, Adam began his 14-year teaching career as an emergency full-time science teacher at North High School. Beginning with the 2002-2003 school year, Adam was permanently hired as a full-time science teacher, and he will continue in that position until June 30th, at which time he will then become the principal of Flynn. While Adam was a full-time teacher, he obtained his Masters of Science in Education in Earth and Space Sciences through UW-Oshkosh. He also earned his Educational Leadership with Principal Certification through Viterbo University in La Crosse in 2012. While at North High School, Adam has served as an academic decathlon advisor from 2002 until the present. He also served as an assistant baseball coach, and as an assistant girls' golf coach, and he is the chair of the Science Department. Adam has been recognized with both the Chamber of Commerce's Excellent in Education Honored Educator and the University of Wisconsin Eau Claire's Excellence in Education Award. So, Adam, we welcome you as a principal, and we look forward to your leadership at Flynn.
Thank you, and good luck, and glad you're there. Great, okay, so individually considered resolutions, we have four tonight. The first one is to reaffirm our health and dental renewal rates. You might remember we had a little question about whether that vote was valid, which we believe it was from our legal counsel, but we changed our policy, our board policy just tonight, actually, Policy 183 on voting to be consistent with basically state statute on conflict of interest and who can vote and who can't on such things. So, we want to reaffirm that vote. So, for those who need to abstain from such votes, it appears that the best way to handle this, according to counsel, is as a point of privilege that they step out of the room, and they let the minutes know that they have stepped out of the room, who would be abstaining. And then, those who can vote on such things... And then those who can vote on such things will vote on it. So any of those who feel like they need to abstain should step out of the room, and we'll let the minutes reflect who has stepped out as abstaining.
I so moved.
So we have a motion from Wendy Sue Johnson to approve these health and dental renewal rates. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Jean. So now it is on the table. Do we have any questions or comments about this, the resolution or anything? Okay. Yeah, I think we did that last time. Great.
I'm sorry that my trial got in the way of.
Well, you know, it forces to fix the policy problem, which was really one or two words in the policy, but it's good it happened in that way. So we should have a roll call vote on this, please?
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle noted she abstained. Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu also abstained. Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cummins has also abstained.
And if we could bring them back in, that would be great. Chris went to the coffee house and came back. Okay, great. So next on our resolution list is the school day start time committee charge. We reviewed it last time, and there were a couple of somewhat minor changes suggested last time, which we've incorporated it. I don't know if we can put it up there, Patty, or if it's possible or not.
My computer is spinning right now.
Yeah, okay.
So there must have been something, it's happening with you guys, too?
Okay, I can summarize the changes in words here. Commissioner Johnson had suggested, because we don't really, we have athletic, we have people with athletic director duties, but not athletic directors, so I use that phrase instead for those who might be on the committee. Also, it was suggested last time to have like a draft plan shown to the Board first and then subsequently a final plan. And so in that committee charge, I put by November, school board meeting, have the committee provide a draft action plan to review it and see where they're at, and then by February school board meeting in 2016, to recommend to the Board an action plan and education plan and so forth, and a timeline of when it might work, and remove the date of when it actually might be implemented. That would be part of their timeline, that they would make that suggestion. So November and February. So those were the changes suggested last time that have been put in it. So first, I think it would probably be best if we had a motion to put it on the floor. If we have a motion and a second.
So moved.
We have a motion down the floor from Commissioner Johnson. We have a second from Commissioner Duax. And now any discussions or amendments or anything of that nature? Commissioner Hamburg Boyle? Okay, Commissioner, I don't know who.
Go ahead.
All right, Commissioner Johnson.
Well, I think the Internet fixed itself, so if we have the, no?
Oh, okay.
I was hoping we could see the committee's structure. Yep, I'm getting it. Yeah, it's coming. And I guess I would offer an amendment to add two high school representatives, and I'd leave it to the superintendent and, you know, whoever she designates to choose those, whether it's the student council president or the Board reps or whoever might be appropriate. But I would amend it by asking that we have, add the two high school reps.
And do you mean one from each?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Do we have a second for that amendment?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Jean. Comments or questions about that amendment? I certainly, oh, Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
So I, I'm wondering, too, as far as how the liaison would be for those students to, to connect with the students in the high schools, and how much would it affect middle schoolers?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I'm sure it probably would, but, and I'm sure there's probably middle schoolers who aren't mature enough, but I would think that the high, you know, having two high school representatives, kind of, you know, looking at the balance of the rest of the committee, that their, you know, opinions would probably be similar.
I just wanted to make sure we covered that. Thank you.
Okay, I think it's a good question. I like the idea of having the two student reps on. Anyone else? Commissioner Vu?
I remember when we talk about calendar, Eau Claire School District has a lot of helpers that were in connection with UW Eau Claire students. And I wonder if we want to consider members from UW Eau Claire or CVTC to be a part of this committee as well?
Well, let's, how about we address the amendment for the students first, and then we can see if we can add that amendment? Okay, let's take a vote on the amendment to add two high school students, one from North, one from Memorial, leading up to the superintendent to decide a process for choosing those. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. So now you were interested in adding, like, from CVTC or something of that nature to the committee? Is that what I'm hearing? Commissioner Johnson?
Well, I can see where the students who, you know, whether they're student teaching or volunteering, where they're, they might have opinions about the dates, but I'm not, I'm not sure how start and end times might play into that, so I guess I'm not opposed to it, but I'm just not sure what perspective they would, they would, you know, how this might even affect the students or the two institutions, I guess.
Just that we look at the holistic approach, look at the whole picture when it comes to calendar, and also start time is part of calendar.
Well, I guess we've already talked about the calendar quite a bit. We adopted a new calendar for next year, so I'm not sure how impactful that would be to have, you know, I think we could survey other people as to their opinions about the start and the end times, but it sounds to me, I'm not sure, maybe Dr. Marks can explain about the calendar as opposed to start and end times. We have pretty much adopted the new calendar, correct? So that is not really the issue, is it? But I do like your idea of asking other students who've already been through the system how they feel about that.
Commissioner Cummins?
I was not at the meeting that approved the committee. I would have spoken at that point, but, so this is my only opportunity, which would be to not vote for the charge because I don't support the committee, because I think that, one, there will be some type of cost in implementing the findings if it were deemed appropriate, and given the budget that we're looking at, I just can't imagine the community wanting to support this at this time. While there might be some great research out there, there's also great research on many, many other initiatives that we do not commission a committee for. Any committee that we commission, there's an expense. When you look at the people that are going to be part of this, when you're spending their time, you are spending tax dollars. And I think this Board has shown a less than responsible approach to committees in the last couple of years. We commission committees, and then they come and report their findings, and we either don't accept it, we challenge the premise, we challenge who was on it, and I think that the Board really should figure out how committees fit into how we govern before we spend more time. So I don't support it for a variety of reasons.
Other questions, comments? As everyone knows, I'm quite supportive of this. I've heard from plenty of parents supporting this. Commissioner Vu, did you have a specific amendment, or do you like the idea of just informally asking the committee to reach out to?
I just wanted to be a discussion. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Other comments or questions on this? Okay, how about we take a roll call vote on this if everyone's ready to call a question?
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
No.
Okay, great, thank you. And I want to thank the students for suggestions on this, on the student reps. Okay, so now we have two contracts up before us. First is the McKinley Charter School contract, and then is the Montessori Charter School contract. So we looked at these last time, and some, we had some questions about, some not. First, I'd like a motion on the table to get the McKinley Charter School contract extension on the table.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion from Chris Hamburg Boyle, I think a second from Commissioner Cummins, to put this on the table. Any discussion about the McKinley contract, any questions? Commissioner Cummins?
Just that we move it forward.
Okay. All right, looks like we want to call a question. All right, let's, well, let's go and do a roll call vote on this. I'd like to, it does have to be money.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next is the Montessori contract charter school extension. Again, this one we discussed with a few more questions last time. So could I have a motion to have this on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I guess a motion from Commissioner Duax, a second from Commissioner Cummins. Any questions or comments? I do have some questions myself, but from other Board members. Okay, I still have a question about the five-year contract length as well as an auto-renew to another five-year. I just think institutionally, five years is a long time, and I also think auto-renewing it for five years is a long time. And second, I have a question about consistency. The McKinley contract is two years, auto-renewals annually, and it's decided by January 15, while the Montessori auto-renews every five years, but it also has a different timeframe from when it decided auto-renews. At the very least, I thought the idea was that they should be consistent in some ways, the two contracts. At least, it would be nice if they auto-renewed on a similar date, if not anything else changing on them. I think that would be helpful for future Boards and administrations, if only to keep track of them. So those are my comments, and I do have a concern with, well, those three or four points that I mentioned. Commissioner Cummins?
I think that, I don't, I don't know where the desire for consistency came from in terms of their renewal dates or length of extensions. I mean, if you, hopefully, Board members will eventually read unsustainable, and we will start to adopt that model where we have research and development branch schools that report directly to the Board, and the goal is not to make them uniform. It's actually the opposite of that goal. So I think, I'm comfortable with how we addressed this at the last couple of meetings and at their, state of their school report, and it's in keeping with how other districts in the state are handling the schools, the innovative schools under their authority. I also think that it is coming from those particular schools and their governance boards, what works for them, and because we did not hear from them that there's an issue, I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Others? Commissioner Jean?
I believe the answer to that question that you were raising is that this is a fluid contract. It could be changed by both sides at any time.
Mutually.
Mutually, okay. So it was addressed last time. I guess I really can't understand your question then, because it was brought up last time saying that we could agree to change it at any time, that's why we were moving forward with the five years. According to Todd, research has shown that similar schools do five-years contract, if I remember correctly.
Yes, I think that was the statement.
Okay, so, so I guess my, my question to you is, what's the issue?
I think five years is just a long time before we re-review a contract. I think in business and in general, it's a long time, especially when in that amount of time, you could have a totally new Board. It's easy, easily in that time, you could have a superintendent retire, and there's no, no time in between where it's been reviewed and no history that's been built up to review it. So that's kind of my concern.
Okay, so, so it's not so much the, the time there, it's, I guess, a time to review and go over the contract?
It kind of forces it just to review it again. Even if it's auto-renewed, that kind of happens, you know, you look at it just to see if you should auto-renew it sooner than that.
Okay, I understand that.
So that's my concern, yeah. It's nothing but the contract in general itself or the school, it's more a procedural thing, it'd be good to renew it. Commissioner Duax?
Well, I brought that point up last time at the last meeting, and I was assured that the caveat would be that the contracts would be reviewed by the Charter Committee, and I don't know if it says that in the contract, but I would think that that was our, our fail-safe method of review. And so I'd, I'd hope that that would happen.
Okay, all right. Anything else? Commissioner Johnson?
Five years is a long time, and I don't, I mean, I don't necessarily anticipate that there might, could be a problem, and I'm thinking, like, worst-case scenarios, what if, you know, the Lincoln Building is, you know, structurally unsound suddenly, and we don't have another place to put them, or, and then I'm thinking, well, okay, well, then we have to come up with a new contract, but, or we continue to elect the same people in Madison, and our budgets are terrible, and we don't pass a referendum, and we're going to increase class sizes dramatically, and we're looking at our facilities in town, and, you know, decide that, you know, it's too costly to keep the, you know, one of the oldest buildings in the district. I, you know, I mean, there's all sorts of what-ifs. So five years is, it's a little scary. We're talking like three biennial budgets, and, so I, I see your concern, but they've also been around a long time, and I don't anticipate any of those really negative things happening, because I know Eau Claire's going to approve a referendum when we bring it to them. So.
I like that.
I don't know. It is a long time. I understand your concern.
Anything else? Okay, looks like we're ready for the question. All right, could we do a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Duax?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Spindler?
No.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummins?
Yes.
All right, great. All right, we shall now move on. We have finished our individual resolutions, and we will go on to the committee reports. And I'm actually using Board Docs reasonably well now. Okay, so next on our agenda is the demographic trends committee update. Our Chair, Mike Fauch, was going to give a report on that tonight, but he couldn't make it. We found out today that he couldn't make it to do that. Since I'm on the committee, along with Commissioner Johnson, I said I would give a summary as best as I could for that for us tonight. Basically, the idea was just to give the Board an update of, of kind of the work we've been doing so far, and the Board, the committee will give a more formal report, I believe it's end of May or early June in that meeting. So the idea was just to give you an idea of where we're at. At the beginning, in the fall, we had discussed the capital needs of the district, and Charlie Kramer had given us a great overview of all the facility needs, which many of you are quite aware of, and we discussed those in quite length, quite a bit of length. And on that topic, we returned to that in the last meeting to think about more, okay, what would go on a capital referendum? We decided definitely there are things on there, and that should go in a capital referendum if the Board decides to do that. And I think more, we'll have a more formal idea coming up soon of what we would recommend for that. So that'll be in the report. The other thing, the, a major thing that the committee has been talking about was, it examined the data about the differences in the conditions and outcomes and resources between the two high schools, North and Memorial, as well as the enrollment gap. That's been, been there for quite a while. there for quite a while, you know, three or 400 students for quite a while, and we discussed if and what the committee should do about that enrollment gap, and/or any other differences between the two schools, we kind of listed several options that might alleviate that enrollment gap, for example, maybe a magnet school, or changing enrollment policies, maybe boundary changes, and we even discussed perhaps recommending an equity committee or something to look at some of the differences, so we're just in the discussion stage, we've kind of looked at all the data for that, and I think the chair and our facilitator, Dan, will put together a report, kind of a summary of what we've, we've put together on that also, and we'll show that to the board, again, in May or June. And the next meeting, we're going to look at APL enrollment data, Applied Population Lab, which is one of the primary charges of our committee, and to project data and to project enrollment for schools, and compare that to capacities of schools, and see if we're going to have any problems with any specific schools, both elementary, middle, and high school, not likely high school. And the other piece is, again, looking at Little Red, and I feel like that's something annually we should do, it's a facility that we have, make sure we're using it like we should, and are there other things we could or should be doing about that, so we'll be looking at that at our next meeting, and the May meeting, we will put that all together and hopefully come up with a report. So that was the gist of the demographic trends and facilities committee report, I don't know if Commissioner Johnson or Dan, if you have anything to add on those things. Commissioner Johnson.
I think that the committee agrees that an opera, or a capital referendum is also necessary at some point, and that, you know, again, basically goes back to the board to start discussing what might be included and when it would be appropriate to go for that, the board, or the committee identified South remodel as necessary when we began talking about the DeLong remodel, that was, you know, the, kind of the major budget item in the last capital referendum that we had, and South is, you know, if you've been in the two schools, they're almost identical, it's got the same issues, it was built about five years later, and so it was no mystery that approximately five years after the DeLong project, that the South project would need to happen as well, so, you know, and you've all seen the five-year plan, the backlog of maintenance needs, that, you know, things that just don't get done because the operational budget for maintenance isn't big enough, and so those are two major pieces of that capital referendum, and then secure entrances, we've done some different things with different buildings, but there's still continued needs to update the entrances at a number of schools, and then, as Rich mentioned, if we just are getting back the applied population projections, you know, there's still some elementary schools that are, that are a little tight, in, you know, particular elementary schools, and looking at whether, like in the last capital referendum, if it would be appropriate to make some expansions or not, so, you know, that, kind of all these budget pieces are coming together for your work sessions in the, in the near future on that piece.
Perfect, thank you, so that's a little more detail about the capital piece, and again, hopefully in a more formal report, we'll flesh that out a little bit more, so, good, thank you. Are there any public comments about the demographic trends facilities? Okay, all right, committee report, so now we have the strategic planning update on that, go ahead and give you a chance to set up for that.
Oh my gosh, she doesn't know everything.
I think we can, we can probably talk through it. I, I know what's on that, that bottom line. No, it's okay, we'll, we'll just go with what it is, I know what's on that bottom line. So, in talking with the consultants and having kind of a logistical discussion about how this strategic planning process might work, their suggestion was to assemble a core strategic planning team, that would be made up of 20 to 25 members, and that core team would include all seven board members, the superintendent, four representatives from DLT, their suggestions based on our systems assessment were student services, assessment, business, and HR, four principals, one from each level, and one from the charter school, four representatives from the various work groups, a parent representative from PAC, perhaps a representative from one of our business partners, and two student representatives, which you can't see, so, it's there. The next piece would be to determine a proposed schedule for the four strategic planning meetings, and, you know, as we talked about earlier, I sent you, or I gave you a list of proposed dates, all of these meeting dates would be on Mondays, starting in May and ending in August, and meeting one would consist of a meeting of the strategic planning team, where the team would review the current vision, mission, beliefs, and core values, and look, I think, too, at the goals that the school board set for themselves, and then identify a list of data to examine related to the oper, operationalizing the goals, and a process for obtaining and organizing the data for use in a second meeting. The second meeting would take place June 22nd, and that would also involve the strategic planning team, and there would be a data review and discussion of implications for vision, mission, goals, areas for action. The committee or the planning team would be asked to develop a matrix for invitations to people in the community to participate in a community forum, and then develop a process for communicating with and inviting those who would be involved in the community forum. That forum can be as large as you would like, they sit in their experience, usually consists of 50 to 75 people, depending on the turnout, and also, I think, you know, probably because we're doing this in the summer, who's available to come. The third meeting would be the community forum, and in that meeting, those attending the forum would be presented with the work of the strategic planning team, they would be provided by the facilitators with a protocol that would allow them input into the work of the strategic planning team, and have an opportunity to reflect on some of the proposals from the team, and this community forum would be made up of staff members, families, students, business partners. And then the last meeting would take place on August 10th, again, the strategic planning team would come together to develop final strategic priorities based on their feedback from the community forum, and to develop direction for action teams, and it's very likely that those action teams would follow from some of the data that we identify, and also from some of the feedback that we got from CEC.
Great, okay, so that's where we're headed, do you have questions or comments for Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner Vu.
Last time we were in group discussion during work sessions about strategic plans, and one of the information that came up was that things were lost once the plans are in place, and once the plans are identified, it's difficult to keep track where things are, it's difficult to implement, it's difficult to come back to find the old information, so I'm thinking, perhaps at the same time that we start doing this strategic plan, we look for a way to initiate a improvement, continuous improvement team, or step, so that at the same time we're working on the plan, we also have ideas how the plan will be carried out, with more details about how that can be carried out, either that this continuous improvement plan take place within the plan, or separate group, but I'd like to see that idea kicked in.
Essentially to make sure it moves forward and continuously looked at, okay, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Superintendent.
Just to respond to your question, I, I do think that's a very important piece of any strategic plan, is how do we monitor where we are, and I think one of the things that we would see in the action plans that are developed under the various components of the strategic plan, that they would be with SMART goals, and there's always a timeline, those goals are always time-bound, and how we would report back to the board on the progress that the action teams are making, so I think that's a very important piece of that continuous improvement process.
Okay, excellent, Commissioner Hambach Boyle?
So, Charles, I, your idea of making sure that it moves forward, so I, I see in my head that many of the people that were involved in the planning, that, that would, that group or that monitoring or however that would look would come out of, come out of that group, with maybe other people, don't you think? I mean, I, I think as we journey, I think that's probably what will happen.
Well, and I think, you know, as, as we've talked about and discussed with your work with key works, you know, one of the major responsibilities of the Board of Education is to monitor and to receive updates about the progress of not only the strategic plan, but the outcomes of the strategic plan, so I don't see why that could not be built into the plan.
Commissioner Cummins.
And I, I think that's the key point, is that having been a part of many of the documents that were on the table that we looked at that did not, were not followed through with, the two pieces that are different, I think, is one, the leadership that we have and Dr. Hardabek is different in accountable, and the, you know, we're, we're getting ongoing superintendent reports with measured, measured indicators, but also we were not following the key work of school boards before, and so it was, there wasn't anything to support, I think, I agree that it should be embedded in, in the process, it, we shouldn't leave there without a very clear way that it's going to be monitored and measured and implemented, but also, we now have that structure as a board, which is why it's so critical that we adhere to key work, I believe.
Commissioner Dux.
Would someone comment on how this would tie into referendum preparation?
I see it as separate, but Commissioner Cummins?
I think it, I think it ties in, in that it shows that we are looking ahead, and it shows that we, you know, have a, a concept of what is coming down the road, so I think it only strengthens our position as a board, but also I think that in building some of this, we might have some natural committee and community liaisons through this process that can be our worker base when it comes to referendum.
Well, that's, that was my thought, that it was good work to do independently, if we want to call it that, but it also would be good foundational work for referendum work.
Commissioner Jean.
Okay, we went with this group because they worked with CEC before, had they gotten our, our report?
Yes, they've gotten the report, they will be working with that report through our action teams and also in setting our strategic priorities.
Okay, great, thank you, I'm looking forward to it, actually, hopefully we can make as many of those as we can as a board, so, great, so let's adjourn to a work session, and we're going to work on collaborative relationships and community engagement, we have some ideas for, for working on that.
This program was recorded and presented by Chippewa Valley Community Television. Chippewa Valley Community Television is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, you can contact us by calling 715-839-5067, or on the web at www.cbcTV.org.